Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Would everyone please stand for a short prayer and a salute to our flag? Almighty God, grant us the wisdom to make those decisions that are in the best interest of all of our residents. May the heavenly Father of us all bless those who have given the ultimate sacrifice in service to our nation, and may He watch over and protect our servicemen and women now guarding the gates of freedom. Salute to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Terry, statement of publication?
Yes, Mayor. This council meeting being held on the eighth day of June 2015 has been advertised and posted in accordance with Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975.
Roll call.
Councilperson Buchanan.
Here.
Kilpatrick.
Here.
McGill.
Here.
Melendez.
Here.
Novak.
Yes.
Rittenhouse.
Here.
Okay, all business?
Under all business, we have the public hearing on the following ordinance. Ordinance number 290-15, bond ordinance providing for the acquisition of vehicles and equipment in, by, and for the borough of Sarvo, New Jersey appropriating $2,300,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $2,190,000 in bonds or notes of the borough for financing part of such appropriation.
At this time, I'm gonna open to the public. Are there any questions or comments on this ordinance? No questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion. Councilwoman Novak?
Yes, Mayor, I move that the public portion be closed. The ordinance adopted on second and final reading and advertised according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Buchanan.
Yes.
Kilpatrick.
Yes.
McGill.
Yes.
Melendez.
Yes.
Novak.
Yes.
Rittenhouse.
Yes.
Public hearing on ordinance 290-115, bond ordinance providing for various improvements in, by, and for the borough of Sarvo, New Jersey appropriating $1,400,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $1,330,000 in bonds or notes of the borough for financing part of such appropriation.
At this time, we're gonna open the public portion for questions or comments on this ordinance. Are there questions or comments? Being no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion. Councilwoman Novak.
Uh, Mayor, I move the public portion be closed. The ordinance adopted on second and final reading and advertised according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Buchanan.
Yes.
Kilpatrick.
Yes.
McGill.
Yes.
Melendez.
Yes.
Novak.
Yes.
Rittenhouse.
Yes.
Next item, Terry.
Mayor, this is new business. I'd like to report having received the supplemental debt statement from Wayne Kornowski, our CFO, as of June 8th, 2015. Need a motion to receive and file.
So moved.
Second.
Next item.
Councilperson Buchanan.
Yes.
Kilpatrick.
Yes.
McGill.
Yes.
Melendez.
Yes.
Novak.
Yes.
Rittenhouse.
Yes.
Introduction of the following ordinance. Is ordinance number 292-15, bond ordinance providing for drainage improvements to Lee Avenue in, by, or for the borough of Sarvo, New Jersey appropriating $800,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $760,000 in bonds and notes of the borough for financing part of such appropriation.
Councilwoman Novak?
Yes, I move that the ordinance be approved on first reading, advertised according to law, for public hearing to be held on June 22nd prevailing time.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Buchanan.
Yes.
Kilpatrick.
Yes.
McGill.
Yes.
Melendez.
Yes.
Novak.
Yes.
Rittenhouse.
Yes.
Introduction of ordinance 293-15, an ordinance appropriating $135,000 for the acquisition of various vehicles and equipment and, by, or for the borough of Sarvo County and Middlesex State of New Jersey.
Councilwoman Novak?
Yes, I move that the ordinance be approved on first reading, advertised according to law, for public hearing to be held on June 22nd prevailing time.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Buchanan.
Yes.
Kilpatrick.
Yes.
McGill.
Yes.
Melendez.
Yes.
Novak.
Yes.
Rittenhouse.
Yes.
At this time, I'm gonna open the public portion for any questions or comments on consent agenda items. Are there any questions or comments? Being no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion. Council President.
Thank you, Mayor. I move the public hearing be closed and the consent agenda resolutions be approved. Roll call, vote.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mayor, can we have some discussion on this? On the consent agenda, 2015-137, the approving of bills, I do have a question. Wayne, maybe you can answer it. On the Werner Net Lesniak, we received that bill for $36,905 about two months, maybe three months ago. Is there a reason it just came out now for payment?
Yeah, I can, Mr. Rittenhouse, I, when I got that bill, I had the opportunity to talk to Mr. Weiner about that bill to make sure that that was all encompassing. That was me.
Aren't we supposed to pay bills when we receive them?
We are, but I wanna verify it because it was a large bill. We typically don't accept, you know, don't get those bills on a regular basis.
All right, and I don't believe that I've seen any of those bills. I don't know if any of the other council members have. But the total amount of bills from Werner Lesniak is $50,346.01. When we hired them, the discussion was because they were saving us $5 an hour at $170 an hour versus $175. The only RFP that they ever submitted on January 1st was for $150 an hour. So I don't understand why they raised it just to save $5 when they should've kept it at $150 an hour. You know, I would be voting no on the three checks. I'm also asking that until we investigate that, that their payment be withdrawn from the bill list. I'll make a motion that we withdraw their three bills from the bill list until we can find out why they're charging a higher rate than what their only RFP was.
Art, make a motion, see if you get a second.
I did make a motion.
Motion has been made to withdraw the payment to Weiner Lesniak for $50,000. Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. It's also very interesting that the bill is being paid, the meeting immediately following the primary election. Very interesting. Could be coincidence, but I don't think so. Okay. So, that being said, we need a motion for the consent agenda. Is there a second? Then we're gonna go to roll call.
Councilperson Buchanan.
Yes.
Kilpatrick.
Yes.
McGill.
Yes.
Melendez.
Yes.
Novak.
Yes, with comment. Again, Mr. O'Brien, you are always commenting on people's motives for doing things. I think that between Wayne and Mike, they showed due diligence on going over those bills before they paid them. That's what they're supposed to do. They're not just supposed to pay the bills. I know, I know that the Dakota's firm that was handling this before actually billed us for more than our resolution allowed. I think it was about $6,000 more than our resolution allowed, so, and we paid that bill, and we didn't resurge anybody's integrity. So I'm gonna ask you again, Mayor, if you'd please stop doing that. Thank you.
Your vote, Mary?
Yes.
Rittenhouse?
I'm voting yes, with the exception of the three bills from Werner Lesniak totaling Also, in response to Mary's, Dakota's also was given a limit, and they had to come, and even with that overage, they came to us asking about that limit. We never set a limit on Werner Lesniak. It could be pay whatever we wanted to pay them.
Excuse me, they never came to us, they billed us for $6,000 more than our resolution allowed.
They did come, they did come to us, and that was the meeting.
That was when they wanted even more money.
That was the meeting. That's correct, and they indicated there was more money. Mary, they indicated there was. But this goes along with when we hired the ABC lawyer. It doesn't matter how much we're paying them, it doesn't matter what their background is. Thank you.
Okay, well then, I'm gonna go to public portion. Are there any questions or comments for the public portion? Mayor, did you have a question or comment? Okay.
Mayor?
Being no questions or comments, entertain a motion to close the public portion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, anything for executive session?
Mayor, I'd like to bring up something that has been sitting around for quite a while, as a matter of fact, since over a year ago now.
Is this for the council or for the agenda, Mary?
Uh, no, I, I find that it's exigent circumstances, so it's gotta be brought up now. It can't wait. We, the Open Space Committee, recommended back in 2014 that we purchased a piece of property that abuts Laurel Park Baseball Field. And for whatever reason, there was some legal questions, and unfortunately, the way things go, it was, you know, out of sight, out of mind, and we didn't discuss it again. It's come to my attention that this property is now being looked at by a developer. The whole idea of the Open Space Committee, and, I mean, this is 16 years, 17 years, we haven't bought anything with that money. Every recommendation that we've made, we've allowed to fall by the wayside. I'm asking, I'd like to do it in the form of a motion, that we set the wheels in progress, whatever the legal problems may or may not be, I'd like them to investigate it, and I'd like to move forward with buying this property with the Open Space Funds.
Mary, I'm not even sure what property we're talking about.
Well, Mayor, it abuts Laurel Park, and we received the letter from the Open Space Committee last year.
And what's driving this? Is this, is this the property that is the extended backyard of the, of the, Jay, do you know which property this is? There was a property where, where some of the people, I can't remember which street it was, they had extended backyards?
Yes, Mayor, the borough was looking at this property to purchase using some Green Acres Funds, and I think Green Acres raised some issues because there were some encroachments of residents' backyards onto that property.
Right.
And I, I think that there was some discussion at the council level, and the council indicated they wanted to try to get those encroachments resolved before they pursued the purchase.
Didn't, didn't we, at that time, say we, that, that we would ask the homeowners if they wanted to extend their property by purchasing this? Who owns this property, by the way?
I believe, Mr. Collagey.
Edwin Collagey.
Ed Collagey owns the property. I, I don't know, Mayor, that the borough was, I think the borough went back to Mr. Collagey and said, "In order to be able to utilize the Green Acres Funds, you need to resolve the encroachments rather than the borough," and I think that's where it was left, is that the borough didn't wanna pursue it any further until the encroachment was resolved.
Is the encroachment resolved?
This is, this is what, I, I have checked into this extensively, and it seems that, and I don't know this to be true, that's why I would like, I would like the property surveyed, I'd like to find out if these are true encroachments on the property, or people just kinda like, is there a true problem with the property? It's my understanding that every time a piece of property is sold, and they have their property surveyed, and they're informed that they have certain things that are on the people's property, the adverse possession stops with each sale. So I don't know if any of these things, and that's why I, I mean, oh, we should check into this. Yes, we should, let's do it. It's, it's been 14 months now, maybe 15 months, since Open Space recommended this. I think that we should proceed with at least finding out.
Well, before we spend the hard money, Jay, can you bring for the next meeting, I think you had maps the last time, a year or so ago?
Yes, Mayor, we have maps to show the encroachments. I can also forward them to Mr. DuPont to review from a legal standpoint.
Okay.
And I'll set up a meeting with Jay between now and the next council meeting to prepare for it.
Does Ed still wanna sell it?
Ed, if he doesn't sell it to us, he's gonna sell it to a developer. He is selling it.
Yeah, but I think it's landlocked. Is that landlocked, Jay, or is it an acre?
No, Mayor, there's frontage on Cheesequake Road, between the houses and the park, there's frontage.
Okay.
I mean, when I-
Are they buildable lots?
That would, one lot, I think, would be buildable. He has the frontage, it's very deep, but you'd only be able to get one conforming lot without providing some type of access drive and some, some variances.
Okay. And how much property are we talking about, Jay?
It's a few acres.
Okay.
It's, it's my understanding, the way the property is made, the front part of it is so wide.
All right, well, Jay will give us the maps, and we'll be able to look at it.
I, I made a motion, and I, 'cause I don't want this to just fall by the wayside.
What is the motion, Mary? We don't even have an appraisal on it.
I, yes, we have an appraisal, we have an appraisal on the property. Yes, we do.
Okay.
It was in the Open Space Report. What I'd like to do is-
Mary, I'll second that motion.
Okay, you know, just let Dave and Mike start the procedure. If, if there's any problems there, that those people through adverse possession actually own the property, then we back out. But the Open Space Committee really would-
So what is the motion?
I think the motion, if I understand it correctly, is authorization for the borough attorney and borough engineer to move forward on the due diligent part of purchasing the Collagey property, as pursuant to the recommendation of the Open Space. I think that's the motion.
Is there, is there a second?
Second again.
Okay. Comments?
Councilperson Buchanan. Kilpatrick. McGill. Melendez. Novak.
Yes.
And, Mayor, one more thing.
Rittenhouse.
Yes.
Forgot one. One more thing. It was brought to my attention, I, and I didn't realize it, that there was no council person appointed to be the liaison. I assumed I was, I thought it had taken care of, I have been the liaison previously. I was not reappointed this year. I would like to be reappointed as liaison to the Open Space Committee.
Well, you have the votes, Mary.
I'll second that.
Yeah, I, I'm asking for extra work, Kennedy, you know? That you've already been doing? Yeah, that I've already been doing, you know?
Okay, is, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, is there anything else for this meeting? Then we'll go to adjournment, and then we will open with the agenda meeting with a salute to the flag. Call in favor? Propose?
Did we have a second?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Terry, statement of publication?
It's in the package. Terry, I'll do it.
Thank you. There's no changes on that. Exactly.
Nope, I got it.
I'm good.
Statement of publication?
Mayor, this agenda meeting being held on June 8th, 2015, has been advertised and posted in accordance with Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975.
Roll call.
Councilperson Buchanan.
Here.
Kilpatrick.
Here.
McGill.
Here.
Melendez.
Here.
Novak.
Here.
Rittenhouse.
Here.
Okay, is there any discussion on ordinance 492-15? Is there any discussion on ordinance 293-15? For new business, discussion on, on shade tree ordinance which would address permit procedure and responsibility to maintain? Is there any discussion? All right, go to committee reports, administration-
I, I just wanted to make one point here regarding that shade tree ordinance. Originally, when it was brought up, there was the, and really, this is just to try and get the residents some responses quickly. We, it was listed in here for a 10-day response by the Shade Tree Commission when something was put into paperwork from the Public Works and forwarded over. We agreed when I was talking with the Shade Tree Commission last time to give them a little bit more of a cushion and make that 15 days.
Can we change that?
Can we change that? I just wanted to-
Yeah, it's gonna be introduced at the next meeting, so we can change it.
Okay.
Okay.
Committee reports, administration and finance, Councilwoman Novak.
Yes, minutes, I move that the minutes and departmental reports that are listed be received and filed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Next item.
Okay, received bingo and raffle applications from St. Sanus Los Casca, Casca, for their calendar raffle on 19 dates from March 2nd.
Any objection? Okay, on the liquor licenses, Terry, this is, they've all been vetted?
Yes, Mayor, for the most part, they all have been, and I'm still waiting for tax clearance certificates to come in from the state ABC, and it is, it is as noted, and if I have received all the information and paperwork and tax clearances before the next meeting, they will be listed for approval. The only discussion that we're going to need to have is on the three items that the police chief put into his packet for his report. One is just to notice to Icon with regards to pocketing your license immediately, they have to, they have had to vacate the license premises, and they have not pocketed their license, and the state law reads that they're to do so within 10 days. So a letter will be going out to them. For Gianna's, the chief had asked that I send a letter out to the owner of this license because this has been an ongoing, he's going to sell it, he's not gonna sell it, and just back and forth. He asked that we have a deadline for the date of sale. At this point, he's just asking for a report status on it, and another, a letter will also be going out to him. For the red zone, the chief is also asking for a status report as, for the sale. I don't know whether or not he even intends to sell the license at this point, or just let it-
What's the red zone?
That's Ethan H. LLC, the old theater where the farm market is.
Okay, well, Terry, when did they get suspended, about, for a year, right?
Actually, the license was revoked, and they had to sell within a year. That deadline is coming up on July the 28th, so if they do not sell the license, the license is gonna die anyway, so.
Send them a notice, receipt, return requested, or return receipt requested.
Absolutely.
And then, and then try to reach out to them by phone.
Absolutely will.
Okay.
The only one that we will need to schedule a hearing for is the Pure Event Center. The chief is asking that additional conditions be placed on that license incorporating all of the planning board's conditions that were memorialized on, at their May 6th meeting. So if you intend to put additional conditions, we need to schedule a hearing.
Would you have the chief meet with them and have all these meetings before our next meeting? Schedule, they can come in and we'll, we'll meet with them then.
I'll have the chief meet with them beforehand, and then I'll go ahead and schedule the hearing if time allows me to do so, because the timing for scheduling the hearing and notices going out may not, may not drive, so it may go into some time in July.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Mary, anything else?
Uh, let's see here, report received, okay, no, Terry just removed that. No, we're good, other than that, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Planning and zoning, Councilwoman Buchanan.
Thank you, Mayor. I move the following minutes and reports be received and filed, the Board of Adjustment minutes of April 22nd, and planning board minutes of May 6th, 2015.
Second.
Next item.
Um, we need to discuss this, Sarah received a request from Dylance Powers asking for a leave from minimum age requirement of 62 be reduced to 55. Jay, who does that have to go before, does that have to go before us for discussion, or does it go before when the boards?
Just in the form of background, in 2009, this issue came from Sarah, the American Council, and the planning board. Both Sarah and the planning board recommended that the age be reduced to 55, but when the council was ready to adopt the ordinance, they wanted it to stay at 62. So you did have Sarah and planning board in favor of 55 in the past, council wanted 62, so I would think that if you wanna, it's still gonna have to go back before the planning board and Sarah, but probably the council should make some type of decision if you wanna change that at this point.
So they triggered it back to us again, asking us again?
I, I think that Mr. Gillette initiated again, 'cause he's ready to start construction, and I think Sarah's bringing it to your attention.
Okay, Mayor, I mean, anyone have any comments, or want to discuss it again, or just leave it as it was back when they voted on, the council voted on it last time?
I think if Sarah and our planning board are, you know, the planning board did, 'cause I don't have anything from the planning board.
This was back in 2009. It hasn't been discussed since then.
Before I was here.
I think Sarah reviewed it, they are okay with it now, just the planning board hasn't talked about it since 2009, but back then, they recommended 55, yes.
You know, I- And I believe that the majority of our housing units are that 55 and over, not that 62 and over deadlines, of age restriction.
Yes.
Does this make it more marketable by reducing that? It opens it up to the more possibility of letting that-
I think that's what Mr. Gillette has indicated, that he's having trouble marketing it at this point, that's why he wants the age dropped.
Okay.
Fifty-five is, you know, the age when people are selling.
Ladies, if, if you don't mind, I think the, I think the complexion of active age retirees is getting younger and younger. I think 55 is a very good idea.
I think that it's a good idea, too. The last thing I would wanna see is also this housing. Now, we don't know what would happen in the event that those buildings can't be rented out or anything, it would just sit dormant and stagnant, and when we have all these other, exactly, and then all of these other housing facilities that already have that 55 and over stipulation, why would we be handcuffing one individual from being able to market as the rest?
I would make a motion, make a motion at, at 55, to bring it in at age 55.
I think, excuse me, Terry, you said resolution. I think this was an amendment to the redevelopment plan, so you'd probably have to do it by ordinance, but if you're gonna move forward, you probably, you're gonna have to refer it back to the planning board.
Okay, tell them we agree with it now and send it back to them, that's what the motion should be.
Take a straw vote on this.
Councilperson Buchanan. Kilpatrick.
Yes.
McGill.
Yes.
Melendez.
Yes.
Novak.
Yes.
Rittenhouse.
Yes, as long as the planning board is still in favor of that.
Next item, Dan.
Letter B, C is request for a trailer. We have put that on for resolution, they have the time, time restraint on that? Terry, do we have a, would that be according to our ordinance on that?
Destruction?
Usually a 30-day, don't we have a 30-day trailer permit?
No, the trailers are issued for a period of one year, and they're reviewed by the zoning officer. And if all isn't, okay, I think they can only be there for a period of three years without them having-
Those other things, those other cargo things that we did the 30-day for, right?
What cargo things?
We used to have those, those trailers were popping up for, on the, on the driveways for like a month.
Oh, no, that's something different.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's completely-[1592.11]
Is there any objection to this? Next item, Dan.
And letter D, the Town Lake East Homes Association, they also approve for that, put that on the agenda?
They want to erect a monument on Borough property.
Right.
I, I just need to know-
Well, Jay, have you seen the monument?
Well, Mayor, they want to put a sign, similar to what they have at the Main Street end, they want to go through and put it at the Washington Road end. And the medians, the grass medians on Town Lake or on the Serval Boulevard are the Borough right-of-way. So, they're looking for permission, they're going to have to get a variance to do it. So, they're looking for permission that the Borough will allow them to put the sign in the Borough right-of-way so they can make their application for variance. But in addition, you may want to have some type of arrangement where the association's responsible for maintenance.
Yeah, I was just going to say that. I don't want to be responsible for taking care of it.
Since it is the Borough right-of-way, you may want to make sure they're responsible for maintenance, not your Public Works Department.
Okay.
I have no problem with it.
Any objection to this?
As long as they're responsible for it.
Okay. Anything else, Dan?
No, Mayor, progress.
Okay, Public Works, Councilwoman Kilpatrick.
I have no reports to receive and file at this time, but I do have at least one thing that, well, actually, two things. The Serval Recycling Commission was just recently awarded on May 21st, the Public Lands Cleanup Award from the New Jersey Clean Committees Council. And this award is presented to the, to municipalities for a program or a project that promotes the cleanup and the maintenance of public lands by volunteers. So, applauded to yet again, the good work that we do in trying to keep this town as clean as possible and especially the volunteers that work with our Public Works people and the Recycling Commission. Secondly, today, as art often does, I'm going to put on my second hat as a teacher here in town, and the eighth grade picnic was today over at Berks Park and I once again just want to say thank you to the Public Works Department because I had multiple teachers, literally five, 10, 15 at a time coming up to me to say how really beautiful that park looked in preparation for today. And not only that, that they actually were very happy to see that throughout the time of the picnic, which lasted for hours at a time in the afternoon, that our Public Works employees were there making sure that they cleaned up the park as the party was going on to keep any debris and anything off where the children were playing and so forth. And just once again, showing the dedication of the Public Works employees. So, I do appreciate that and I told the teachers that I would make that a public statement today. I don't like to step on Ricky when it comes to recreation, but I will say I had the opportunity to stop by the Borough's Flea Market the other day and despite the rain that was threatening, it was such a great, great event. And once again, the fields looked great, everybody looked like they were having a great time and it was a really, really good turnout. And the weekend ended up being such a nice time, so Ricky, once again, I bought too much stuff. I bought too much stuff.
My husband doesn't want me to go.
But it was well worth it. Other than that, progress.
Thank you. Recreation, Councilwoman Melendez?
Thank you, Mayor. Item A, no departmental reports this week. Item B, application for special event permit received from Serval Soccer Club to conduct their annual Father's Day soccer tournament on June 20, 20, and 21st, 2015.
Anything else?
A couple of things, yes, the picnic, the flea market was a success this Saturday. There was actually 63 vendors that actually attended, so that was really cool. Good job, Vicky, for spending a lot of money there.
Yeah. It was easy.
Bring it back to the people. Registration is ongoing for this year's summer camp programs, ongoing still to first grade to eighth grade. There are summer programs registered in Mickey Sedlec Center and also Servalrec.com. We have Kennedy Park on June 13th is movie night at 9:00 PM, so that's still good, weather permitting.
What movie is going to be playing?
Blended.
Blended.
It's a good one. It's Adam Sandler. Really good.
Oh, it's Disney, okay.
No, it's not Disney. It's an Adam Sandler movie.
Oh, is, oh, oh, I know, yeah. Do you have the next two more coming?
They get married on thing, yeah. The Independence this year is, actually, it's on June 28th, Sunday, 4:00 PM. So, I know people are used to having that in July, but since July 4th is on a Saturday, the REC board felt that Sunday, June 28th, 4:00 PM would be ideal. So, there will be free rides from 4:00 to 8:00 PM, live entertainment, and fireworks go off at 9:30. That is recreation. A couple of things from the library. Saturday, June 20th, 1 to 3 at the library to kick off the adult summer reading club. We are inviting several adults to join us for a delicious and fun event where you get to show your flair for the arts in a very special way. This low maintenance reading club allows participants to read as much or as little as they want and pick what they want to do and read. So, again, Saturday, June 20th, 1 to 3:00 PM at the library. Also at the library, actually, no, Berks Park, June 27th, 11 to 1. It is the kids' summer reading kickoff party. Enjoy airbrush tattoos, face painting, balloons, and cotton candy. The friends at the library provide fun photo cutouts for taking pictures. June 27th, Saturday, from 11 to 1. And finally, on June 13th and 14th, there will be a library book sale, 1 to 3:00 PM at the library as well. And just one quick update on IT, the, we approved a couple of weeks ago the security camera project and that will be kicking off on June 22nd, which is a good thing because once that's done, then we're going to start expanding the system as I explained in the last meeting. That's going to be the hub of the town for security. And we are putting the senior center number one on the list after that, so I will keep you up to date. I know that's, that's very important for security at the senior center. And I believe, oh, one other thing, we're putting, Dan had asked that we, IT puts, they're going to put a 42-inch screen downstairs in the front of the Borough Hall. And it is going to be able to show presentations of like what we show on Serval TV. And that should be completed, my notes here, we're going to be starting on 6/8 this week, so by the next week, that should be done. So, that's cool. And my last thing on my list is the council chambers audiovisual upgrade, which we're still waiting on quotes, and we suspect to have that completed by the end of the summer. And I think, progress for today.
Thank you. Water and Sewer, Councilman Rittenhouse?
Thank you, Mayor. No reports to be received or filed, just a couple of quick things. Historical Society is in the process of all of our fourth grade students from the upper elementary school doing their class trips and coming and we bring them here to Borough Hall, two classes a day, and that's going very well. At the end, I'm going to compile because I'm asking the kids for some ideas and they're coming up with some great ideas of what they'd like to see in the town. So, that's going on and we have until Thursday this week and then Monday and Tuesday of next week. And the only other thing, Mayor, just congratulations on your primary win on the second. Other than that, progress.
Okay. Public Safety, Council President McGill?
Thank you, Mayor. Our request for a block party received from Charles Spano to be held on July 1, 2015 with a 7/12 rain date on Oxford Drive between Florence and Albert Drive.
Is all the paperwork filled out, Terry? Any objections? Next item.
Request for approval on the following fighter fighter application. Daniel McCabe is a regular member of Melrose Hose Company Number One, which was accepted at their June 2nd, 2015 meeting.
Any objections? Next item.
Letter of resignation from Peter Starick as a member of Melrose Hose Company Number One.
Is there a motion?
Same.
Next item.
Request received from Sergeant Sean O'Donnell for the use of the OEM trailer for Sayerville Police Participation in the annual Tour de Force Charity Police Ride, departing from Ground Zero Memorial to the site of the 2013 Boston bombing, departing on September 8th,
Any objection? Next item.
Nothing except a couple of comments. I did have a meeting with the postmaster and people from the logistics at the U.S. Postal Service along with Congressman Pallone and Assemblyman Musneski. One thing we are going to get out of this is they will upgrade, at the very least, the building that is there now, but we'll look at other sites in Sayerville. Not as a retail post office, but a post office where we can do regular business. Unfortunately, the post office is becoming more and more of a parcel service. And when they open up the post office, they just really want to sell you stamps and envelopes. So, we let it be known that that's not what we want, but they are looking into upgrading the building that we have now or possibly to look at different building sites. The other night with the torrential rains, obviously, we had pretty torrential flooding that goes along with torrential rains, I guess. And I was, I, like everyone else, I took a ride around town to take a look at what was going on. I ran into the people on Lee and Charles and Orchard, they were pretty well flooded out. But I can say that on Lee Avenue, we have construction on the table, ready to go in there and alleviate the problems that they are having at this time. I would just suggest that we try to do this as, in a more timely manner than we are right now because they just can't, they can't handle that kind of flooding. It certainly wasn't sandy, but I actually live only three blocks from that, so it gets a little interesting after a while that the four-inch water mains can't handle this and this water is running off of Route 9 and into the cisterns that go down into Charles, Lee Avenue, Orchard, areas of that, you know, that nature. We talked about the Collagio property, but on a, on a, on a better note, I went to the 75th anniversary of the opening of Cheesequake Park and, Mayor, I was there with a good friend of yours, Mayor Owen Murray, and everyone had a great time. I never saw many, so many park ranges in my life. There was no Yogi Bear, but it was a great time. And these were very dedicated people and it was well worth spending that Saturday afternoon. That was after I went to the flea market and yes, I did buy two sets of earrings because I knew that's the way back in the house. Other than that, progress.
Okay, thank you, Council President. For my comments, just a, a little bit of a, of a history on the Open Space Committee. Over the years, a couple of the things that the Borough has accomplished without spending any of the open space funds. One, we, we did secure in perpetuity the Julian Capic Nature Preserve, which is 500 acres. We did accept a 100-acre donation from the DuPont Corporation. We did preserve the last remaining farm in the 19th District, Deekers Farm. Now, one of the things that the Open Space Committee has done is they have identified the open space in Serval. The Borough of Serval owns approximately one-third of all property in the Borough. And what the, the initial strategy of the committee was to buy the large parcels. And sometimes the price would, would far exceed our funds. But it, it, it's not that we haven't done anything, is we haven't done things where we were required to, to take money out of open space. Wayne, what, what's the yearly amount that's collected on the Open Space Act?
Approximately $450,000 right now.
And how much is in the fund now?
I want to say it's probably around $5 million.
Okay. Just, just to put it in perspective, as you drive, if, if you look at the property on the other side of Kennedy Park, it's like a, like a landscape, that's the old Crossman Sand Companies property. It's about, what's it, about 150 acres, Jay?
Yes.
Now, I know over the years, we, we, at one time, we, we did make an offer and what happened, the property owner just wouldn't engage us in conversation. But I, I think 16 million somehow rings a bell.
I think, Mayor, in that 16 to 20 range, I believe.
Right. Was what we were, that's what our, we went as far as hiring an appraiser.
I believe you had an appraisal done, your previous administrator spoke with the property owner and made an offer on behalf of the Borough.
Right, and which was rejected. So, it's not that we don't do anything, it's just the strategy was to buy the last remaining large parcels first, but they seem to exceed our, our ability. With that, I'll go, but we, we certainly have not been inactive, we just haven't had to use the open space money. And this was, this was really at, at the direction of the Open Space Committee. It wasn't at the direction of the Borough Council. They were, they were appointed over the years and they were good people and they still are and, and they, they conducted it with all diligence and very pleased with, with what they've done and, and what they've identified. With that, I'll go to the Business Administrator's Report.
Thank you, Mayor. I need authorization for the Borough Clerk to advertise for the receipt of bids of contract number 2015-2 for the demolition of 124 Buchanan Avenue.
Any objection? Next item.
I need authorization to purchase one 2015 Ford F-250 utility body truck from New Jersey State Contract for the Department of Public Works from buyer Ford in Morristown for an estimated cost of $37,188.50.
Any objection? Next item.
I need authorization to purchase one 2015 Ford F-450 Mason dump body truck from New Jersey State Contract for the Department of Public Works from buyer Ford in Morristown, New Jersey for an estimated cost of $40,565.
Any, any objection? Next item.
I need request for authorization to execute a easement agreement between the County of Middlesex and the Borough of Serval for the improvements to the intersection of Main Street and Pulaski Avenue for traffic signals and sidewalk improvements.
Any objection?
I need authorization to extend the contract for sodium hypochlorite with miracle chemical for one additional year with no increase in contract pricing.
Any objection?
No.
Anything else?
No.
Okay. CFO's report?
The, the, what I have is a ordinance that'll be introduced, that can be introduced at the next meeting for the, the Borough share of the cost of the traffic, traffic signal at White Oaks Drive. Jay is going to report that the county is ready to move on that, that project and we're going to be responsible for one-third, one-third of the cost.
That's been a long time.
Yes.
Very long times. Okay. Thank you. Anything else?
I believe that's it.
Okay, Jay, your report?
Thank you, Mayor. First item, improvements to Ernston Road, that project's been completed, we recommend it could be closed out. There's going to be a change order actually reducing the cost of the project, so we'd ask for a resolution at your next meeting.
Next item.
Second item is Main Street, White Oaks Drive. As Wade indicated, we did receive a letter from the county, I provided that to the council in your packet. Two things they're looking for, first is the one-third contribution, which we're going to go through and take care of. Second thing is they are looking for a resolution agreeing to the final plans for the project. We've previously submitted those to Officer Bartlinsky in Traffic Safety, he has no objections. So, if there's no problems with that, we'll have a resolution approving the plans.
Okay.
That way, you can send them both and the county can bid the project. Third item, you've already taken action on rejecting the bids for Bordentown Avenue. In the future, we're going to go through and rebid that project.
Okay, next item.
Item four is a report that we prepared at the expense of some potential developers. There's some cogeneration facilities proposed in the vicinity of Journey's Mill Road. They are looking at alternatives to provide cooling water. We did a study that takes MCUA's gray water, uses the existing DuHernow Pipeline to get it to that area. So, this is really just for your information, but it could come back if the developers want to pursue it. It'll be a way to go through and provide them with a cost-effective way of getting cooling water to their site.
Okay, next item.
Androjeski Drive, there were some complaints that the Borough has received about the condition of Androjeski Drive. That's a crossover Route 35 between different sections of Melrose. There were some jurisdictional questions, whether it was the state's jurisdiction or the Borough's. It turns out it is the Borough's jurisdiction, but there is some funding that's available. So, if a grant application is made, we're advised that we may be eligible for that funding. So, if you want to proceed, we need a resolution authorizing the submission of that grant application.
Any objection? Next item.
Lee Avenue, we talked about, but in addition to introducing the ordinance, Mr. Bailey would like to proceed with the design phase. So, if there's no objection, we'll have a resolution authorizing the design. That way, when the money's appropriated, you have the design in place.
Yep.
And then finally, the 2014 Phase 1 project, we received bids last week, we're currently evaluating the bids. If everything's in order, we'd ask for a resolution recommending the, the award of that contract at your next meeting.
Thank you.
That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, just ask Jay real quick on the first one. We, a couple of years back, we talked about the striping plan because the traffic's still backing up on Ernston and Bordentown. That we had to wait for the closeout of the contract to, to go back and look at it?
Still has not been closed out.
Right, I know, but could we, when do we move forward on that?
I'm being told that there, shortly, there's going to be a letter coming to the council. They are looking for a resolution approving that traffic signal. That's one of the last things that the county needs before they can close out the contract. I anticipate, if not your next meeting, the meeting after that, you'll get that. Once it's closed out, then you can make those requests for modification. So, hopefully over the next month, it'll be to that point where you can make those requests.
All right, thank you.
Jay, who does the timing of those lights?
That's a county intersection, both Roser County Road, so it would have to be coordinated through the counties.
What about like Main Street and Sayerville Boulevard? Who did the timing of those lights?
Main Street and Serval Boulevard?
Yeah.
That was done as part of the development for Town Lake and it was submitted to and approved by Middlesex County since they're taking over that traffic signal.
Okay, I just, I just wish somebody'd go out there and look at the timing because I get stopped there almost every time I come down Main Street and there's never anybody sitting there for the light. They've all made their right turns and gone and it stops all the traffic on Main Street and the person that was at the light has made their right. It's, it, every time somebody comes to that light, whether they're making a right or they want to go across, it's changing. And it's, you know, it's backing up Main Street terribly for no reason. I mean, hey, I know, you want to get out, you want to get out, but when you really go, need it, that light is still changing and it's wreaking havoc on Main Street. Is there any way that you can ask the county to maybe go out and look at the-
That's what, it would have to be done at their request, so we can ask them to look into it and if they agree, then they can maybe go through and do it.
I'd love that, if you could.
Sure.
Okay, Borough Attorneys' Report?
Yeah, Mayor, this is just authorization, not to file a lawsuit, but to file a declaratory judgment action. Recently, the Supreme Court came down saying that Centco was abolished, it was moving everything into the court's jurisdiction. The court has given towns, all municipalities, 30 days from today's date in which to file declaratory judgment action, saying, hey, look, we've filed round two, we filed round three, now give, immunize us from any future lawsuits for builder remedies. I've, I've had the opportunity to speak to the Borough Planner regarding this. He was just going to have a, I think the meeting with the, the Affordable Housing Committee was last Wednesday, I believe. So, I told John that I'd wait for him's, his direction, but this is just an authorization. If we've got everything under wraps, to file the declaratory judgment action in accordance with the Supreme Court.
Okay.
Sounds good.
You know, one other thing, on, on the open space, on the, on the National Lead Property, there was a, one of those parcels, there were three parcels, I think, is it Parcel A? A? Parcel A was donated in perpetuity to the state or to the Borough as an open space migratory bird, and how many acres was that, Jay?
At least in the 20 range term, not possible, I think it's in 20-plus acres.
Again, no cost, no cost to the, to the Borough. As far, you know, I was thinking about this Weiner-Lezny Act legal bill, and as we did with the Dakota's firm, I think it would be appropriate if we put, because, if we put a not-to-exceed amount where they need to come back to the governing body, so I would recommend to the governing body that we put a not-to-exceed, let's say, another $5,000, if they have to spend more than $5,000, they need to come to the governing body and go over it. Would somebody make that motion?
So moved, Mayor.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mayor.
Any comments? Roll call.
Councilwoman Buchanan?
Yes.
Kilpatrick?
Yes.
McGill?
Yes.
Melendez?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Rittenhouse?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to open the public portion for questions or comments on any and all topics. Yes, Renee.
Renee Tischler, 20 Hampton Way, under Public Works, a two, purchase of two trucks listed. Is that part of the ordinance of 29015?
Dan?
Or in addition to?
I'm sorry, you're quite, you're questioning the purchase of the two trucks, or?
Is it part of this ordinance here that we just-
And the Public Works.
No. It's just the two. It's, this is for our discussion now on the agenda, it'll be brought up at the next council meeting for first reading.
It's in addition to.
But, no, the, no, I think the, if I understand the question right, it is coming from that ordinance.
It's going to come from the-
From the bond, from the bond ordinance it's coming from, yes. Yes.
Are there any other questions or comments? Being no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Move the public portion to be closed.
All in favor? Aye. Pause.
Your second?
Who was the second? Second motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Who?
This guy.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pause, thank you, everyone.
M-C-G-I-L-L.
Open this up.
I think, Mayor. Mayor.
Good night, Melendez.
Good night.
Jay, I'll call you on that property expansion.